session. For August 10, 2020. I made a motion to open the work session.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, before we go into executive session at the end of the work session with an executive session on Friday and at the end of the executive session when we came out to work session, I did not report out and because it was just very late, very hectic and everybody had to go somewhere that we had a vote in executive session and by a vote of three two, we voted not to send the draft document to the ethics board. So that being said, I had to report that out before so I didn't get in trouble. And now I need a motion to go into, or I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss Goldstein versus the Ethics Board in the Bill of Rights of American.
So moved.
I'll second.
I'll second, all right, all equal roll. Trustee is mentioned. Kelly.
Yes. Yes, I said yes.
Trustee Mattes.
He's not in, he's not here.
Here.
Yes.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee Tifor.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy. Aye. Okay, we will see everybody on the executive session. Everybody has the link for that, right?
Tom, this is Yoram. I don't have the link to the executive session. Could someone resend that?
I can send it to you.
Thanks.
Yeah, Jeff Meagan too.
Okay, I'll do that right now.
Sally, can you?
Nora, I can do it if you want to go in.
Oh, if you can, okay.
Yeah, I could do it. Yeah, I'll do it right now. You're welcome.
Thanks.
Everybody here is good. Okay. Hi folks, we got, let's wait for everybody to get here. We got Dan Natchez.
We understand that we can't, we can't really much.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we approve the resolution and then we'll establish the fund at the next meeting?
Hey Nora, does any, do you need a copy of the printed amended Goldstein papers?
No, I got, I had a friend, I can now print, but I had.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I just sent an email to Sally asking if I can have a copy and if anyone else wants one, it would probably make sense to ask her at the same time she cop, you know, copies mine.
No, I was able to print it. When did we get it? I might have been able to print it before the power went out. I had trouble printing Adam's phrase, so I had to like,
Yeah, yeah.
thumb drive to a friend. It was.
We're talking, yeah, Victor, we're talking about whether you want a copy. I've asked Sally to print me a copy of the latest Goldstein, you know, amended papers. I don't have, I don't have a printed copy. So if you want a printed copy, I would just suggest you, you just send Sally email so she can print a second.
Yep.
That's all.
When Bob gets back on, I have a Pony Express story.
I'm here.
Okay, so Ben, what was the guy who, I can't remember the name of the man who owned the Pony Express, Ben somebody? But he built what's now Manhattanville College. That's where his property was. Yes, he did.
Wow.
We're gonna have to look it up more specifically, but yeah.
What you're gonna send Friday, I assume is gonna be a red line copy?
Yes.
Okay. If it's, I don't know if it's possible to get it early enough so we can, if, if, can we send it to Sally too? Cause if she's still there, they could print copies.
I'll do the best I can.
Yeah.
Depends on, you know, depends on the discussion on Wednesday and how much change we need to make. But I'll get started. You know, I'm hoping if I can find some time tomorrow to pull out the one argument and post it, you know, posted as a separate argument so people can see that.
Okay, let, let me just get back to the board of trustees meeting here. We've just come out of executive session. No action was taken that needs to be reported. And now we are, for the people who are watching at home, there was a major power outage at the Regatta again. The Regatta was out of power most of the week. We got it back on a couple of days ago. People might have seen the generator that was sitting in the street. That was loaned to us by New York State. We want to thank them for that. But it, it went out today, the power at a very inopportune time. And the board decided that we were gonna delay the work session until August 24th. And the only thing that we are gonna deal with at this work session is one matter which is also on the regular session for tonight. Back to you said that matter is Westchester Joint Water Works filtration plant. That's going, that might be built at Westchester County Airport. Westchester Airport, just to bring people up to speed, Westchester County has agreed to provide the land where this will be built, which is very helpful. Westchester Joint Water Works is going to be lead agency in partnership with Harrison. Because this is in Harrison and it's gonna be before Harrison Planning Board. So Harrison Planning Board and Westchester Joint Water Works are gonna be lead agencies. So what's before us tonight? This is to permit pre-planning of the environmental review and engineering. This isn't to approve the filtration plan. What this does is, is that we're saying that we are going to join with Harrison and the town of Amerenick to begin the process of looking at whether this is a viable alternative, which, you know, it looks good, but you know, you never know what happens in this world, which is a viable alternative to build the filtration plant. And, you know, hopefully it'll be a type two action. Which is a proposal to establish a joint capital, which is a joint water works proposes to establish a capital joint project involving all three member municipalities with the aim of constructing a filtration facility for the benefit of all water consumers within a Westchester joint water service area on property within the town of Harrison proximate to its lot Riley Public Water Source. We can't prove, you know, you can't approve a project until the secret is done. So that's part of what's going over here. So we're just agreeing to establish a capital joint project. You know, this is something that is mandated by New York State. There's a potential for huge fines if we don't build it. This has been kicking around probably since around the year 2000 or a little bit after that. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
I have just to quite, one, just to, just to clarify that the secret determination is just for the planning of the project, not for the construction of the project. And two, I just, can we add a not to exceed our component is $29,916. Can we just add that figure to this in case it goes up? We would have to add more and, you know, just the, we don't, we just limit what.
Twenty nine million?
No, we're, we're, oh, actually 29 million, but that's the whole, sorry, it's 29 million for the overall project. We're not committing 29 million for the, for the study.
Nora, we're not committing anything for the study right now. This is just to, to say that we're gonna do a joint project for the others. And go, let me finish. Before the Harrison Planning Board.
I, okay, so there's two questions here. It says we are funding, we're establishing a joint capital project.
Yes.
So we can't establish a capital project for even the planning of it without funding it. So to what level are we funding it? What's the funding level and have we appropriated the funds to fund it?
Right now we are just funding it to get through the secret process. Because if we don't get through the secret process, we can't fund the project.
I, I know, I under, I understand, but we, we are agreeing to fund a project. What level are we funding the study? That's my, I guess, I'm not, that's my question.
I think that depends upon what happens at the planning board. I don't think we have a cap on that yet.
Okay, I, so I think in order to fund something, we actually have to have an allocation. Like.
I don't, you know, I don't think so. I know, Bob, can you help out with that?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I missed the question, Nora.
We're going, we're going to Harrison Planning Board for secret.
Right.
We don't know what it's gonna cost yet.
Right.
And because you don't know what studies that they're gonna ask for, you don't know any of that. So we're just, this, what this does, this, this is just say, we, we, we wanna build a joint project.
Okay.
Passed by the town of America, it's already been passed by Harrison.
Okay, what I'm saying is we are not the lead agency here.
Right.
So we don't do the secret classification or typing. What we're being asked to do is approve the establishment of a joint capital project for a proposed water filtration plant on property. In order to establish a joint capital project, we have to allocate funds for it. And that's, I think, what we're not doing here. I think we can't agree to fund something without having a budget allocation for it.
I think.
And I don't think any of the other resolutions we've adopted actually give, authorize the studies. We have put, we have approved some funding for this, correct?
What were you gonna say?
I don't know. I can't answer that last question, Nora's last question about funding. What I was gonna say was I'm not exactly sure what that last clause means in terms of authorizing the project. I know Christie was going back and forth a little bit with Lori Lee today. Did you have any?
She said.
Any insight on that?
She said that the village has to establish a joint capital project and then the controller can send the reimbursement for the invoices already in the pipeline. So I.
So we're talking about, I, I don't know what this is, cause we haven't reviewed this, but it sounds like it's satisfying some required of the controller to provide the money that's gonna pay for this.
We can't authorize establishment of a fund that we haven't put. We haven't.
It depends, Nora, if what you're doing is establishing a fund into which the controller is gonna put money.
But the controller's not gonna put money. It's, it's the three, the three municipalities.
That's, that's what Christie was just saying though, what Lori Lee said today.
The controller of the water works is gonna fund this.
Controller of the state of New York. Is that what you said, Christie?
I said, comptroller, that the village has to establish a joint capital project and then the comptroller can send the reimbursement for the invoices already in the pipeline. She doesn't, she doesn't specify, so I can, I can respond to her and ask her to clarify.
Westchester General Water Works has the bills in the pipeline. Probably for the engineering study that was originally done to see if the site was compatible. Now, what we're doing here.
Why, why don't we make things easy and just establish $5,000? And we can add to it later on and, or not, in that way.
I, I, I'm just a little, I mean, I'm sorry, every other community passed this exactly like that? And it's, it's working? I, I don't see why we gotta revolve at the wheel here.
Well, because we're not, we aren't, we are not typing it. We have nothing to do with the seeker typing, because we're not the lead agency. So that's the Harrison Planning Board. We are establishing a joint capital project. In order to do that, we need to have allocated money to establish a joint capital project. And my question is, have we allocated that money? And that's probably an Augie question. I know he's quite busy with other stuff right now.
Is there a line?
Dan Sarnoff, didn't Harrison type it as a type two?
I don't know. The resolution that was given to us was the one that was prepared by Lori Lee for the town of Harrison. So I, I'm assuming they adopted, but I'm not sure that they adopted.
Cause it wouldn't make sense for them to be lead agency, if I'm wrong.
Just, just, let me, let me jump into something Mr. Natchez, trustee Natchez just said. And it actually wasn't, it was, it was a viable idea to just, you know, put in the resolution to propose a number and, and then say, and any, you know, and not up to of, you know, of $10,000 and whatever other bills are incurred.
That way you set up the fund that I think is necessary here without committing resources, substantial resources.
Can I say, right?
Well, I may have missed, I may have misspoke. I'm not saying they're the lead agency. They are, they are, they are the agencies that's in charge of classifying the project and they've classified it as type two. We are not needed for seeker. What we're needed for is establishing a fund. And we have a process by which we have to establish a fund and I want to make sure we are doing that correctly.
Okay, but why don't we do this? Why don't we approve the resolution and then we'll establish the fund at the next meeting?
I think let's go back. It's not clear what we're doing here. Establishing a joint capital project, what does that mean? It's more likely, the interpretation is that we are approving kind of this joint capital project. And we have the backup saying that is for the 108 billion. So why don't we wait and see exactly what they need? I, I, I remember, I recall joint water works telling us they got an EFC grant to pay part of this. Maybe that's what they need now, right now. I, I, I think, let's clarify what's the actual action we are proving here. And for when that is done, then in the whereas clause include what, what David is, Bertschel is telling us here that is, it is in connection with the, exactly how it's there. Riley filtration facility A 1364, construction of. exactly how it's there, Riley filtration facility A 1364, construction of 13 MGD and, and the percentages in the whereas clauses and then in, in the result that we are approving exactly what they need and then we'll put the amount that, that corresponds to us if needed, or if we're doing something else, then clarify that, but we, we certainly, we've never done something like this. So, so I, I really not clear what we're doing. What's the action we're approving?
We, we, we start, they need this to start the secret process. They need, you know, the, the Westchester General Water Works needs all three communities to commit to starting a secret process. That's what this is about.
Then let's just, let's say that, but we're not saying it. Let's revise this. Let's revise this to say what it needs to say without doing it here. Let's, let them, let's staff work and tell us what, what is needed here.
It, it, wait, just some. Yeah, just, just let me point out, I always ask you guys to ask me when you have issues and you never do. Never do.
You know, Tom, I got power back at one o'clock yesterday.
Yeah, yeah.
There's like, I got to this today.
That's always the excuse. Today, you could have called me today. You all know my number. I've asked you this many times. It just is a courtesy. And it, it, it just falls on deaf ears.
Okay, you know what? Then maybe, maybe we really shouldn't have had the meeting today because nobody really is on their game. Everybody's had five days, but you, you had power for five days. I'm sorry I didn't ask you sooner, but I really got to this at three o'clock today.
You know, I, I understand, but this is, this isn't the first time, you know, this happens constantly. It happens every time. So, you know, whatever.
Well, okay, what this looks to me is that we are asking to approve the establishment of a joint capital project for a proposed water, water filtration plant on property. We're approving an entire project that we haven't appropriated any funds for. That concerns me. I think what they really want is for us to approve the planning study, but that's not what the, what the resolution says. And I'm, I don't know if the Water Works is without power or everybody. I mean, everybody's had a rough week. It's not a very clear resolution.
Work for everybody else. Christie, you understand what this, the board's concerns are?
I do.
Okay, did you have a conversation with Lori Lee?
Yes.
And maybe we could, we could do it at Monday's meeting because it needs to get done.
That's fine. Resolution.
What?
I said I can help with the resolution, Nora. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
We should add it to my, to Monday's meeting. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, that was the only item we already agenda. We'll take it off the meeting tonight. And in motion, close the work session.
So move.
Second.
We're going to roll.
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Anne Murphy?
Yeah.
Do we just get out and come back in at like 7:20?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Mike and.
Okay. Exactly. You cannot start share screen while the other participant is share.
Oh, so whoever hostess has that up. Somebody's right there screen up. That's.
Iran. Center Cliff.
Alive.
Life. And the mics on?
Yes.
Everybody here. Kelly here.
She's there, but she's not, she doesn't have her mic enabled.
Okay, get everybody enabled their mics, please. And let's get ready to start the show. Okay, one second. Good evening.
Victor, you're muted. Victor, you're on mute.
Thank you.
And that being said, good evening and welcome to the 7:30 Board of Trustees meeting for the Village of Mamaronek for August 10, 2020. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
for which it stands, one nation, undailed by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. First item on the agenda was going to be a presentation by the Board of Ethics. There, oh, I need a, I need a motion to open this meeting.
Second.
Okay. All unfair. Hi. Hi, thank you. The first item was going to be a presentation by a Board of Ethics, but due to the power outages in the community, they were not able to prepare a package in time, which is more than understandable. And we will be hearing from them at the September meeting. The next item on the agenda is our esteemed Police Department. And they are going to go through the statistics for the Village of Mamaronek. Last year, we have full statistics is 2019. And may I introduce the Chief of Police of the Village of Mamaronek, the venerable Chief Christopher Leahy. Hello, Chief.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, yes, so the Police Department is going to present the 2019 crime stats for the Village of Mamaronek. I've asked Detective Sergeant Mark Gata to put that together. And he has graciously, and he will be presenting it. But before we start with that, I'd like two minutes of your time just to discuss a couple of quick topics, if you don't mind.
Please do.
Okay. Police reform. We're working diligently to achieve compliance with the Governor's executive orders. Our main push right now is to achieve New York State accreditation. This is going to be a long and difficult process, but we're confident that we'll be able to apply for certification by June of 2021.
Chief, can you elaborate as to what you have to do to comply that you're not in compliance with now?
So there's nothing per se that we're not in compliance with. But they are trying to, they give us a broad stroke of what they would like to see. And I think accreditation, once we achieve accreditation, we're automatically going to fall into compliance.
Okay, so what do you have to do for accreditation?
We would need several hours for me to explain that to you. So in its most simplest form, New York State has set up guidelines in policy, procedure, training. And we have to conform to all of that, and then they send somebody out to do an inspection and go through our manuals, our procedures, and our training records. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I'm not really doing it any justice. Like I said, if you'd like to come to my office and I could sit down and show you the whole procedure.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
It's kind, I think it's kind of like, or maybe it's more of a statement, it's kind of like when there's like a museum accreditation or like the New York State, you know, school certification, the state sets up all these standards. And you may comply with them, but you just have to prove to the state that you comply with them.
Correct.
So you may, like, you might be red, you know, right now you might be able to be eligible for accreditation, but you have to go through the application process.
That's correct.
Well, good luck. A lot of paperwork.
It, it is going to be, but the village has recently purchased Power DMS. So we're trying to put our manual into electronic format, which I think is going to make the, the process of being certified that much easier. So that, that's the big, that's the big project that we're working on now.
Thank you.
Number two is COVID-19. Although our numbers are nowhere near what they were two, three, and four months ago, we still have positive cases within the Village of Mamaronek. This also holds true throughout the county and throughout.
How many cases did you say?
It varies from day to day. We don't know how many, we know how many people test positive on a, on a daily basis. But our information is only as good as Department of Health, New York State Department of Health. So we monitor those numbers that they give to us on a daily basis.
I think we're up to, since the beginning, 477.
Yep, we're right around that number.
Yep. That's where I saw it today.
But we've also haven't had any positive cases reported in the last couple of days. So anyway, as a result of that, even though our numbers are far better than they were a couple of months ago, we still need to, we still need to practice social distancing. If we can't maintain social distancing, we have to wear masks. We have to wash our hands often, use soap, use water, and, you know, wash your hands for 20 seconds. We have to continue doing this stuff. The last topic I wanted to discuss was larcenies from vehicles. Over the past couple of years, the village has put out a couple of PSAs, public service announcements about this. From time to time, we get bands of young adults coming into our community and either breaking into cars or actually stealing the cars. This behavior has increased since COVID-19. Westchester County stolen car totals have risen 65% since last year. That's a tremendous number. Last night, in the Village of Mamaronek, we had 13 larcenies from vehicles, 13, and one car was stolen. Of those 14 cars that I just mentioned, none of them were locked. These are the PSAs that we put out. We try to get everybody to lock their doors. If we give those people the opportunity, they will continue to come back. Last night, we certainly gave them the opportunity. We need everybody to create a harder location. We need to be more conscious of security. We need to lock our car doors. We can't leave our keys in our cars. And we can't leave valuables in plain sight. Remember, if they come here and leave with nothing, the likelihood of them returning decreases tremendously. I don't know how else to say it. But we, we need everybody to lock their doors. We can't give them the opportunity to come in here and commit these crimes.
Can I just ask, approximately, do we know approximation of what time these, as you put it, crimes of opportunity are happening?
Yeah, so generally they're happening, happening during the overnight. Because we feel very comfortable and I'm glad that everybody feels comfortable. You know, the Police Department tries to provide a good service and tries to provide a good, safe community. But that doesn't take away from us still doing what we have to do to secure our property. We need to lock our house doors. We need to lock our car doors. We can't give them the crime of opportunity. Give them the opportunity to commit that crime. Okay. That's all I had. If nobody has any other questions, I'd like to introduce Detective Sergeant Mark Gata.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees. The chief had asked me to put together some, some statistical presentation for crime in the Village of Mamaronek for 2019. And this was actually supposed to be several months ago, but because of COVID, we're kind of a little bit behind schedule. So I'm going to be using 2018 comparisons to 2018 statistical numbers to kind of give us an idea where we at, where we're at. Give me a moment, I will be sharing presentation. Okay, is everybody seeing the vision up? Okay, all right, so Uniform Crime Reporting, so really, real quick, what I'm going to do is just a quick introduction about what Uniform Crime Reporting is, its basic setup and standards we kind of adhere to, and what's reported and how. and standards we kind of adhere to, and what's reported, and how and whom to, who gets reported, kind of gives a little background, and then I'll just get right into the numbers. Uniform Crime Reporting, or UCR, law enforcement agents, agencies across New York State, the Village of Mamaronek being one of them, provide statistics on crimes that are reported to the Police Department, to New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services, as referred to as DCJS. And we do that on a monthly basis. The format of the report and the definitions of time are determined by the Federal Bureau of Investigation. And New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services ultimately gives that information to the FBI, who compiles national statistics on crime. UCR, Universal Crime Reporting, is divided into seven categories. Section 1 and 2 are what's called Part 1 and Part 2 offenses, which I'll get into in a minute, and that just kind of breaks down types of crimes. Then it's, Section 3 is domestic violence or homicide. Section 5 is reported arrests for 18 and over, which is essentially adults, adult offenders. Section 6 is reported arrests for people under the age of 18, so juvenile arrests. And the last section is reported time detail. So just a real quick definition for Part 1 offenses, they're considered the violent crime or most violent crime by the FBI, and they include murder, negligent manslaughter, rape, robbery, aggravated assault. What signifies something as an aggravated assault is that it typically involves some sort of weapon other than what's considered personal weapons or hands. Burglary, larceny, and motor vehicle theft. In 2018, the Village of Mamaronek had 140 Part 1 offenses reported. 2019, we had 173 reported Part 1 offenses. So we see, we saw an increase, Part 1 offenses from 2018 to 2019. Part 2 offenses are considered to be less violent. If you look at the list, it's pretty extensive. And while we, the FBI would say it's less violent crime, they do include what I would say is, in vernacular, is violent crime. You know, especially when you talk about sex offenses, kidnapping, and such. In 2018, we had 410 reported Part 2 offenses in the Village of Mamaronek, and in 2019, we had 333. So there was a slight decrease between 2018 and 2019. So just visually represented, these are Part 1 offenses for 2018. The Village of Mamaronek had one homicide, 2018. And besides that, as violent crime, we saw a significant amount of larceny. 99 cases in 2018. If you look at 2019, no reported homicides for 2019, but larceny went up 122 from 99, 2018 to 122. So we saw an increase, and we're actually, in 2020, we're seeing a continued increase of larceny. This is just compares 2018 to 2019, Part 1 and Part 1 offenses. Between, between the years, you can see larceny increase, motor vehicle theft increase, increase in aggravated assault, light decrease in burglary. Robbery stayed the same, and like I said, there was no reported homicide between 2018 and 2019.
Can I just ask you one question? The larcenies, is that also considered the car breaking in, is that considered a larceny?
Yeah, larceny would be, as a whole, it would include car break-ins and any other kind of, any other kind of stolen, any kind of stolen item or money or anything like that.
So that's petty and major larceny altogether?
Yeah, it, it brings it all together.
Okay, thank you.
I said, this is a graph is 2018 Part 2 offenses of the Village of Mamaronek. You can see controlled, we'll get, I'll get into it a little explanation, but you see controlled substance possession, there were 91 cases. And 92 cases of what's called simple assault, and we typically see simple assault related to domestic incidents. Here, 2019, there was actually a very, I'll show you in a minute, there's actually a large drop off on criminal simple possession of narcotics. This kind of shows it best, but if you can see there in the controlled substance possession, between 2018 and 2000, the significant drop. The reason for this is in 2019, in January 2019. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
The marijuana possession law?
Yes, exactly. Westchester County District Attorney's Office no longer prosecutes, I guess would be simple possession or unlawful possession of marijuana, which is defined as less than 25 grams of marijuana in possession, unless that crime is in connection with another crime. So if you're caught with just marijuana, you, you won't be charged by the Police Department, will just dispose of the marijuana. If that marijuana is located after arrest for another crime, like driving while intoxicated, you will be charged with the unlawful possession of marijuana. Moving on, this is domestic violence data from 2018 to 2019. Majority of it is typically simple assault, most of the charges. And again, this is not total number of Mexicans that are in the Village of Mamaronek. This is solely ones in which charges are filed with court. Because there, there are a lot of, there are a lot more reported domestic incidents than actually follow through with prosecution and going to court. 2018, we had homicide. The perpetrator was arrested, was convicted of murder in the second degree, and two pounds of aggravated assault upon a police officer. And she was sentenced to 25 years to life. So she's not eligible for parole until 2044. And in 2019, no reported homicides in the Village of Mamaronek. Okay, so just to kind of, another way to look at it, how we're doing on arrests. So in 2018, we had a total of 550 crimes reported in the Village of Mamaronek. And we made 325 arrests of adult offenders in 2008. In 2019, we had 506 crimes reported in the Village of Mamaronek and 220 arrests, again, for adult offenders. This is just another graphical representation of arrests of all offenses for adult offenders. As you can see, significant drop in controlled substance possession for marijuana prosecution changes. So in 2018 and 2019, these, these are arrests, juvenile arrests. And you see that there's a increase between 2018 and 2019. Now, this doesn't mean that there are more juveniles committing crimes in 2019 than 2018. In January of 2019, the last section of the Raise the Age legislation was passed or went into effect in the New York State Legislature, which means persons that may have been a charge of the adults the year before, 16-year-olds and 17-year-olds, which was the, the age, 16-year-old was the age of adult responsibility or criminal responsibility, moved up to the age of 18. So what we're seeing is same amount of crime, but now instead of charging that person as an adult, they're being charged as a juvenile. Again, graphical representation from 2018 to 2019, reported, reported arrests under the age. There were no hate crimes reported to the Village of Mamaronek Police Department, 2018 and 2019. And, yeah, please, go ahead.
Can you just explain, what's the criteria for a hate crime?
A hate crime is defined by New York State, New York State law and FBI statistical reporting is the intent of the person, you have to deliberately target that person because of their age, race, sexual orientation, et cetera. So, you know, just, just an example of a case, we had a traffic accident where two people that didn't know each other, one person exited the car and yelled a homophobic slur at the other driver. That would not be considered a hate crime, because it wasn't a deliberate target of that person, because they were, it just happened to be homosexual, they didn't use it deliberately against that person, it was more of like a way to poorly explain their distaste with that person. If that, if that makes any sense.
So, so I think if the person had screamed the slur and then hit him with the car intentionally, that might have been a hate crime.
If he, yes, if he knew he was, well, it doesn't matter if he knew, if he did it because he was homosexual, if that person was identified to the person driving the car as a homosexual, and they struck him with the car deliberately because he was a homosexual, then it would be a hate crime.
Yeah.
Okay, so just the, the last thing I have, and just building off what the Chief said, is wanted a quick a look at vehicle break-ins, which are now called DBIs, because that's significant change or significant increase. So in 2019, if we're just looking from the first of 2019 up to now, we had 13. Year to date, in 2020, we have 27. That's a 107% increase from the year before. So it's incumbent upon all of us, the Police Department, public servants, that we emphasize to our residents that you got to remove anything valuable from the car. You have to lock your car, and you have to take the key fob out of the vehicle. Not only are they going into the unlocked cars to take something, if the key's in there, they will take the car. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have an audience member who has a question, I'll allow him to have a brief question, Mr. Glenn Tibbet.
Glenn, speak.
Glenn? Enabled?
Enabled. He's enabled.
All right.
While we're waiting for Glenn, I have a question that is a little bit.
Hello?
Hello. It's just unmuted.
All right, go ahead, Glenn.
Yeah, um, I'm glad to finally have you here giving a report, I've been asking about this for years. What's missing and what I'd like to see is, I would actually like to know traffic accidents that are occurring in the Village of Mamaronek, either vehicle-to-vehicle, pedestrian-to-vehicle, where they are and the cause of them. And if we could get statistics on the type of tickets that are being given out in the Village of Mamaronek? Do we have a problem with people texting and driving? Do we have speeding going on, on, let's say Weaver Street, because we did lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour in the village to try to take care of some some different troubled spots? So if we could actually have the statistics on traffic violations and traffic accidents on a quarterly basis, that would be helpful to see what should be addressed, if we find that we're, we're increasing the amount of traffic accidents that texting and driving, maybe that's, you know, something that we have to look at. Finally, if the Police Department could be helpful, because I've done this before, if you are aware of any new robo calls that are trying to take advantage of senior citizens, that you can possibly make the public aware of, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Following up on Glenn's comments that you have. We spent money on the traffic control speed signs. Knowing what, what the data from that is showing and what's happening. Is it helping, is it doing nothing, you know, is it, what's the overall trends, et cetera?
So it is very helpful. We get data from it every time we put it out. If there's something specific that you would like to know, I'd be happy to answer you. But like I said, we're getting data every time it's out in the street.
Well, the question is, first of all, what is the percentage of cars that are exceeding the speed limit when they, when it first lights up? And what percentage are actually slowed down by, before they leave? Is it helping in reducing speeding? You know, I don't know what else it's, what, what else it's collecting, so it's very hard for me to ask the question of what we'd like to know, but it'd be interesting to know what trends it's showing.
So it definitely works to slow people down. If nothing else, it tells people how fast they're actually going, and I think some people, sometimes people just don't realize how fast they go. When you have the bright numbers flashing in your face, it, it tends to slow you down.
And I think also, part of the effect of it is that it's always telling you, you're not, you're not supposed to be going over 25 miles an hour. And that's, that's the message that we're trying to drill into people's heads, that in the Village of Mamaronek, and, you know, we learn by repetition, right? In the Village of Mamaronek, the speed limit for most every area is 25 miles per hour, as opposed to 30 in the rest of New York State.
But what I, what I've been getting to, Chief, is let's assume it's out there, you know, for a day, or, you know, when there are 100 cars that pass a day, okay? You know, is the trend higher or lower in terms of the number of people speeding as it, as it first lights up? You know, is it going up or down? And are people slowing, you know, what percentage have slowed down?
If I understand.
Before.
If I understand your question, the, the, the longer the machine stays out there for, in that particular location, the slower the traffic trends.
So it has an effect?
It certainly does.
When you take them away, do people speed up again, or do they?
So what we try to do, if you've noticed, you know, we try to move them from location to location, unless, unless the Traffic Commission is looking for data for, for a long period of time. And by doing that, I think we're giving the community a constant reminder of, hey, this is the speed limit, and, you know, pay attention to what you're doing, drive safely. So we, we try to, we try to spread it out as, as much as possible.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so are you still going? I've seen in other communities where, where it tells you what the speed limit is, it tells you how fast you're going, and then as you slow down, it says, thank you. It actually recognizes and reaffirms your behavior.
Is that from personal experience?
Yes.
What I was looking for, though, is statistics that would help show us whether the trend is in terms of the number of speeders is going down as they enter. You know, if there are 100 cars a day, you know, for the sake of discussion, you know, you know, in January, and 74% are speeding as they come in, and, you know, 99% are down to the right speed before they leave, and are told, thank you. And, you know, a year later, or four months later, whatever it was done, you know, comparing, comparing apples and apples to see, to see if we can, if the trend is actually getting, that people are slowing down, or whether they just can't eat constant reminders.
So we're all human, and I think we do need constant reminders. If you speak to any police officer in the Village of Mamaronek, through enforcement, the use of the speed trailers, I think we were gaining compliance at a pretty quick rate for the new 25 mile an hour speed limit. I think since COVID-19, I think numbers have ticked up a little bit, as far as people traveling a little bit quicker, so we're, we're starting to work on that again. Or we have been working on that again, to try to get the trend to, the community to slow down a little bit.
Question, Chief?
Sure.
For the Sergeant, and thank you for a very, very good presentation. When will the 2019 data can be compiled, we may hear from that? And the second question, when, when, about the, like, equal break-in, for example, information we just heard is so relevant, so. information we just heard is so relevant, so important, so, so timely, when, when, when those trends or those situations are just popping up? How to convey them more quickly to the community? Today, we're lucky to have you. But how can we, you know, you have some, how, how can, how can we do better? Because I know we have, we have some information out there, how can, do you think we could be more effective? And how, what can we do as borough trustees to help in that respect?
So, so the 2020 data was, was presented tonight, I'm sorry, 2019, 2019 data was presented tonight. We were pretty much ready to go with that presentation last February, towards the end of February. Because of COVID-19, it hasn't been presented until tonight. So going forward, 2020 data should be ready sometime next February. So we could do that presentation on an annual basis. As far as the PSAs, the public service announcements, we have gotten this information out before, the mayor's been very helpful, and the manager's been very helpful in blasting emails to the community. It's specifically about this problem, because this isn't the first time that it's occurred. Is it a perfect system? No, I don't know that there is a perfect system. Maybe, I, I don't know, we need to maybe figure out, if this is the first time you're hearing about it, then we definitely need to work on it and try to figure out how to get the bigger band of people.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, may I?
Yeah, you may.
Chief, we're going to a different platform pretty soon, we're going to a constant contact platform, so we'll be able to expand the number of people that we reach out to.
That's great.
Yep.
Who else? All right, Chief.
Yes.
He, Detective Sergeant Gata, I want to thank you both very much for an excellent presentation. And Chief, I want to thank the men and women of your department, who have gone way above and beyond call of duty, both with COVID, and with the past emergency that we just had, as have all village employees, and we'll be talking about that at another time. But you, you, you folks are on the front lines there of helping people and responding when roads are flooded and trees are down, and it's dirty work and it's dangerous work, and we all appreciate it, we all depend upon you to do your duty to keep us safe, and we just want to thank you.
Thank you very much, it's very much appreciated.
Have a good night.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right. The next presentation we have is by the organization Sustainable Westchester, and this is about purchasing electricity, I believe, and we have tonight Carmen Santos and Mr. Dan Welsh. Hello, Carmen Santos, how are you?
Good, thank you, Mayor, Murphy, sorry. Thank you for having me here tonight, and everyone, I hope that you're all well after the storm, and we really appreciate the opportunity to be here. So I'm here with our program director, Dan Welsh, and we'll be giving a presentation on Westchester Power, which is our county's community energy program. So let me share my screen, please.
Sure.
Thank you. So ever, for those of you who do not know, Sustainable Westchester is a nonprofit consortium of local Westchester municipalities. We work, our goal is to facilitate sustainability programming to help us ensure a better future. And out of the forty-five municipalities in the county, forty-four of them participate in Sustainable Westchester, as well as the county itself. And tonight, we're here to speak about Westchester Power, but we also have other programming, and one of them is Community Solar, where program participants get financial benefits for supporting solar development. Another one is our Heat Smart Campaign, where we help residential and commercial property owners evaluate their clean heating, their heating and cooling, so that we can help them derive effective solutions for more efficiency. And we also work with clean transportation, that is, we work with electric vehicles, and we're working to secure the infrastructure for them. In the zero-waste area, our biggest highlight is the Recycle Right app, which municipalities use to upload their recycling schedules, this helps them improve their waste management and reduce their cost. So Westchester Power is one of our largest programs at Sustainable Westchester, we work with municipalities to aggregate residents and small businesses, so that we can buy clean electricity collectively. This helps us set the criteria that energy companies must meet in order to supply us energy, and it helps us have a positive impact on the environment and our communities. So twenty-seven municipalities currently participate in Westchester Power, twenty-four of them have chosen green supply or one hundred percent renewable energy as their default supply, and we are very happy to say that the village of Mamaroneck has chosen green supply as their default option. The biggest reason we do this is because of the environmental impact we can have, and so program-wide, since, since the start of the program, we've mitigated six hundred and sixty thousand metric tons of carbon dioxide, equivalent to taking one hundred forty-two thousand six hundred cars off the road, and the village of Mamaroneck has contributed to this by helping us remove forty-four thousand, I'm sorry, yeah, mitigate forty-four thousand five hundred metric tons of carbon dioxide, which is something like removing nine thousand four hundred cars off the road in one year. So the program has many benefits, including that we are a better community program, we are not an ESCO, we do work with ESCOs to access renewable energy, but program participants, that is, residents and small businesses, do not have to sign any contracts, there is no fee for entering or exiting the program at any point, there are no surprises for their rates, we will let them know ahead of time when their rate will change, such as when we will be going into a new contract, if your municipality chooses to participate in 2021. We set a not-to-exceed bid price that is informed by research in the energy market, as well as past utility prices, and our large customer base helps us secure competitive fixed rates, which buffer us from the volatility of the daily changing energy market. We do outreach within our communities, we also are available by phone, we are available by email, ready to answer any questions customers may have, we warn them against predatory ESCO contracts that are out there, we teach them how to read their bills, and we also provide all of these resources in Spanish. The biggest reason we're doing this is to mitigate climate change, as you've noticed, we had a really mild winter, and just recently, we've had a storm that has led us to not have power. And so the climate events will become more frequent and harsher, and so the biggest reason, again, we're doing this is to help mitigate those instances. And so the New York State has set aggressive climate goals that your participation within this program helps us meet, because we are offsetting hundreds of thousands of metric tons of carbon dioxide, and also your participation in this program helps our municipalities have clean energy community certification that positions them for granting, that makes more sustainability programming available to them. Also, one of the biggest things you have helped us achieve is have a seat at the energy market. Now we are asking for rates, we're asking for renewable energy, we're getting involved in sustainability programming, so really, you've helped us have more of an energy choice, and you're helping us create a more sustainable future. So we have, since the start of the last contract in 2019, we've been behind the utility by about a few cents for our rate, and so right now, you have green supply at seven point nine cents per kilowatt hour, and you're about to review some numbers that are comparing the utility rates to the, to our Westchester Power rates. And so in these rates, please keep in mind that most of our customers have one hundred percent renewable energy, and that the CONEd supply does not, is not one hundred percent renewable energy. So since the launch of the program for Contract Two, we've been behind about six hundred and fifty thousand for the village of Mamaroneck, and, but since the launch of the program, we've been ahead, that is, we've saved three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And, sorry, but that, we've also mitigated forty-four thousand five hundred metric tons of carbon dioxide. So a lot of people like to look at these numbers on a per account, per month basis, because it's similar to looking at their electricity bill, so for green, sorry, for green supply, and Contract Two, we've been behind about eight dollars for residential accounts, and since the launch about, we've been ahead about two dollars. For green commercial, we've been behind about nine dollars, and for the, since the launch of the program, we've been behind about five dollars. But we want to say that thanks to your participation, we have been able to secure one of the most economical rates for green supply available in Westchester County. So we've looked numbers in the New York State Power to Choose website to see what's available, and for the Mamaroneck area, the less, the less expensive rate is about one cent higher than our, than our rate, and the only other option is about two times higher than our current rate. So overall, again, we've have the most economical green supply rate, and the residents and small businesses in the village of Mamaroneck have saved about three hundred and fourteen thousand since the, since the start of the program, and more importantly, we've mitigated forty-five thousand five hundred metric tons of carbon dioxide. So Westchester Power is also a foundation for our other clean energy programs, and one of them is Community Solar, again, where program participants can get up to ten percent on savings on their utility bill by supporting solar development. Right now, they do this in a signup basis, and also there is, they have to pay two bills, one is for solar credits, and one is for their utility bill, which in the end helps some save up to ten percent on their utility bills. But moving forward, we want to make these savings available to Westchester Power customers on an opt-out basis, and we can do this because the PSC has allowed programs such as Westchester Power to offer community solar on an opt-out basis, and they've also instructed CONEd to implement consolidated billing, which would mean now that customers don't have to pay two bills, they just have to pay one bill, and which makes everything easier, because now they only have to pay their utility bill. And so we're very excited about this, and we want to make this available to low-income customers first, as we implement the program, because we want them to also have the benefits of the clean energy transition. So another stuff that, that Westchester Power allows us to achieve is to test new models and new programming, and right now, we have a pilot program called the Residential Demand Response Program in CONEd, in the CONEd territory, where you get financial payments for reducing your energy use at peak hours. We're also in conversations with companies that are helping us bring direct supply, that is renewable energy supply to Westchester County. Right now, we participate in the clean energy economy by buying renewable energy certificates that offset our current grid use, and that means that somewhere else within New York State, even energy is being generated that matches our consumption. We're also testing new models and technology in our facility, we are setting up solar panels that channel energy to an innovative battery, battery storage system that is used to charge electric vehicles. So we're doing all of this because we would like to implement these within our communities, and we're also able to do all of this because of our large customer base, and so it's really like saying, we're able to do all of this because of you. So now I will be passing the presentation to Dan, who will speak, who will be speaking about the renewal process.
Thank you, Carmen, and thanks, everybody. There was two functions of our visit tonight, one Carmen just fulfilled, which is adding to our outreach and education activity, that's always an important part of our work, but we're also trying to get everybody organized for the renewal process. Next slide, Carmen. So the, this is the overall context, we are actually going into our fifth year of the program, it's hard to believe, and the current contract marked our, our second contract, it's the first, first renewal, and that contract ends at the end of this year, December thirty-first. It, go to the next slide, so if we back up from that, these are the major milestones, there's a whole lot more that's to be done to make that happen than this, but these highlights kind of give you a sense of the, the big milestones, and so August is MOU month, and MOU is maybe a little bit of, hard to characterize, you know, by calling it an MOU, it's really a kind of an agreement of sorts that gets everybody on board with the criteria for the, for the renewal, and commits them to that renewal if we meet those criteria. If we do that, then in September, we have a package that goes out that contains those, those MOUs, it goes to all the bidders, and that way the bidders know, here's the load that, that we're bidding on, and if we meet those criteria, if we beat those, those target prices, then, then we've got a good contract. Subsequent to that, then, we've got the whole process, which you folks are already familiar with, where we have to go out with a new notification letter, which contains all of the, all of the details about the new contract, the, the rates and the different products, and of course, all the information they need to make any changes they want, whether it's supply or opting out, and again, this, this takes us up to November after thirty-minute, thirty-day opt-out period. Next slide, please. So, as I said, the MOU is the document that sets us up for that RRP process, and it captures the, the most important criteria, it will look for two supply options, most of our towns and most of our residents are in the hundred percent renewable, but we still keep a basic supply option that people can fall back on and reduce their costs by a couple of tenths of a cent, and it make a difference of maybe a couple bucks a month for, for most people. That the really important part of the MOU is the not-to-exceed pricing, price limit, which basically says, in order to be, be a good bid, it has to come in after that. Obviously, we look to the bidding process to drive it down to wherever the market's going to go, we want comfort that there's not some sort of, just open-ended, upper-end to this, and the third important pillar of that MOU is that the continued commitment to the development of New York State renewable energy in the form of those renewable energy certificates that Carmen just told you about. Okay, next slide. We have a fun new element in this, this bidding process, we're introducing a reverse auction format, where the, the final price bids, where we used to take them by email, and we'd say, everybody has to get their bids in by, by, you know, ten o'clock Friday, whatever date, and then we'd get them in, and we'd go back to everybody, and we'd say, well, we got, we got one that's in the lead, but if you want to make one last offer, so that kind of, you know, old process, in this case, we're going to have everybody log in online, and they're going to be bidding supplier A against supplier B, they won't know each other's names, but they'll be driving down that price right in front of us, and go to the end of the auction, and even at the end of the auction, if there's somebody who's made an offer within the last, and I forget what it is, like two minutes or something, they actually kick the auction out. and I forget what it is, like two minutes or something, they actually kick the auction out, extend it a little more. So we think that this is really going to help to make sure that we are finding the right place in that pricing. And it's also already helped, we're actually about a month ahead on the Nisek side of things in the north of the county. And it's already helped to bring in more bidders. We've got four bidders for that, for that RFP, which will go out before the Con Ed RFP. It also is nice because it leaves a very transparent record of the whole, all the proceedings. And what's additionally kind of interesting is that we can offer the ability for any of you to log in and what they're going to do is actually have a Zoom meeting where you can be up and watching this going on. And our, our auction service will, will kind of help, you know, do a play by play for everybody. So, so again, new tool, we think will juice up the, the negotiations quite well. Next slide, Carmen.
It's almost like the Mercantile Exchange.
It's like a what?
It's almost like the Mercantile Exchange.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much real time. Get in there and, and do your best. And, you know, I'm sure I can imagine these people standing in their, their trading rooms with, you know, the CFO behind them, telling them what they can do and can't do and, and, you know, making those last bids. So they say, I think it's, it's nice that we're moving into, you know, a new technology level with this and, and we have high hopes that it will squeeze the last mill out of the, out of the pricing. So again, we're in the, the MOU phase of things. And that's, you know, one thing we're, we're looking for from your board is to make sure that we're executing the MOU in time for that RFP, which is going out in the beginning of September, about September 6th or 7th, I think. So I will say that we're, right now, that, that key number that we were talking about, a meeting of the chief electeds and administrators a week and a half ago or something. And we were trying to get to consensus. And we kind of narrowed it down to this center block here in terms of the level. And again, this is, this is kind of the comfort level. It's the level that we're saying, if we don't get bids under this level, we're, we're not going forward. We're stopping. It doesn't mean that you're not driving it down lower, but we still, we want that comfort level. So we wanted to know where everybody was on that. And we did have folks that were sort of on the 71 here, which is, which is basically that number was derived from the indicative pricing that we obtained. And, and importantly, it includes the renewable energy certificates. So it's a full green rate because that's what everybody's trying to achieve anyway. And it should be noted that renewable energy component this year has increased significantly. It used to cost us, I think this current contract is about a quarter of a cent, 0.25 cents or so. And it's now, the, the one year rate is 0.65, the two year rate is 0.75 at the indicative level. So, so that's increasing our price a third of a cent or something like that. So, so this number picks that up as well. So we do have a little bit of play as we try to settle that last number, which goes in the MOU. Now, we had also talked about other formats because people were understandably, like during this last year, feeling some pressure about the, the pricing. We obviously are trying to remind people to step back. It's not, it's not a short term thing. It's a long term thing and we're still overall in a decent place. But there was interest in like, is there other, other ways of going at this? And one town had proposed, how about variable rates? So we've, we've kind of scrambled around and worked out a schema that, that would work for that. But we, we also learned in that process is the variable rate is, in a sense, not a panacea. They were, they were hoping that a variable rate would mean, when we kicked this new contract off up in, in January 1st, that hey, there's a chance that we could hit rates that are like close to today's historical rates, just because it's variable. But we, we learned that basically when you're going out to January 1st for two year contract and buying power at that time, that's, you know, that's the market. You're going into the forwards market and the, the starting price is the same. Going variable just means that at that point, as you go forward, you track the market a bit. So the, the energy prices are going down, gas prices, which, which, which drives everything down. Your price is going to go down. And the, and the other way around, of course, if, if prices go up, you go with it. So we're having a meeting tomorrow where we're going to kind of go through this. Again, the due diligence piece of it. We were not, never thinking that this was going to be an attractive thing for people. But we want to make sure that everybody's understanding it and comfortable with it. So we've already got 18 people signed up for that meeting. I'm hoping that once we go through all this, we'll come back to those, to these potential caps, the price not to exceed levels and settle in on one, say either the 781 or the 765. Some people, again, are looking for something more aggressive. And the only thing that does is it says, okay, if we get down that low, we might be in a position where, where we, you know, we only get that price on a 12 month contract. And we've got a shorter contract. Some people like that idea. Others were saying, you know what, we like the stability. There are some events next year, which introduce a lot of uncertainty. You have the closing of the, the last Indian Point unit. And we have the closing of the last coal plant in, in the, in the state. And, and then we have the uncertainty around the, the economy, of course. But generally, the futures are all, are all going up. So our, our personal inclination is to nudge people towards the fixed rate. But we're going to go through this tomorrow. So, so with that in mind, again, the goal is to try and get sign off on the, on the MOU within this month. I don't know if, if Mamaroneck, given your schedules, whether you can either do some kind of flexible authorization tonight, or if you have another meeting later in, in a month, then, you know, you can wait, see what the, what comes out of tomorrow's meeting and, and wrap it up, you know, having all this background then. But I'm happy to take your, your sort of feedback or ideas about how we can help you to, to get through this and, and you can help us to, to get the, the MOU wrapped up. So that's, I guess we've got a couple more slides here before we open it up. Carmen, you want to move on? And this is again, just to say, once we get through this process and we have the RFP, we've made the award. The rest of that process is something that you might be familiar with. You'll see those notification letters. We, we do a post bidding outreach event as well. That's actually mandated by the Public Service Commission. So that'll be in the mix. And then there's the enrollment process. So anybody who, who doesn't opt out becomes part of the enrollment data set and that gets submitted. People roll in on their first meter read date or they roll into the new contract on the first meter read date after January 1st. And this should say, that should be January 1st, not December 1st, sorry. Go ahead. Yeah. And this is just, again, to remind you about the, the notification letters. They include all the content that's mandated by the Public Service Commission. And we try to make it as friendly as possible, but there's a lot of information in there. So of course, we're always available for phones, phoning and explanations and emails. And we, we're happy to take questions from our Spanish speaking population as well and pass them on to Carmen. So, so that's part of our communications goal there.
What we're looking for here is the more municipalities you have, the greater buying power you have and the lower the price you'll get.
There's a little limit to that. And in fact, what we're going to do this time, and again, thanks to the flexibility of the auction platform, we're going to do some price exploration in the sense that we're going to take the, the current 100,000 customers and get bids for both the whole load, but also break it into groupings of maybe 20, 25,000 residents. So there would be like four or five blocks and see if that makes a difference. Because there are some ESCOs that are perfectly strong ESCOs and have the capability of servicing our, our load. But they, but they have sort of scale limits that they like to work with. And they've actually told me that, it's like, some of them are like, well, you know, we probably, we'd be in if it was 20,000, 25,000. Above that, you know, it's probably more than we want to take in one shot. So I thought that was interesting input. And again, the, the ability to run multiple auctions on the, in the one trading day is going to give us the ability to see just, just what difference that, that makes. So there's, there's kind of a sweet spot for, potentially for this.
Interesting. Any other questions for people aboard?
The Residential Demand Response Program. Can I, can I ask just quick, is that like the peak off peak? Is that comparable to peak off peak pricing that Con Edison offers? And I know that initially you didn't, Sustainable Westchester didn't offer a peak off peak pricing plan. Is this your answer to it?
In a sense, in a sense, it's a response to it. It is not a peak off peak, you know, rate set. That's something that's still of interest and perhaps in the future. But it's, it's a program where basically mostly commercial enterprises have been able to do this over the years because they can shed a big, big amount of load at one shot. And they've been tapping into, they're, they're actually Con Ed programs that they can tap into. But the, the, there were thresholds for participation. You had to be able to lose a certain amount of load. We're working with a technology supplier that will enable us to aggregate the, the residential load reductions and therefore be able to bid into these programs that have only been available to the commercial folks. So we have about 50 people who are now signed on in this pilot for this year. And they've already had a couple of calls where the, what happens is on, you know, the utility on a certain day, they know they're going to hit this peak. And they put out a call and people shed load. And they can do that in many ways. I mean, the easiest way, you know, if you're, if your air conditioner is on 72, you bump it up to 74. If you, you know, if you want, go out and, and, you know, do something outside and shut down the lights on your house, whatever. But they, they are estimating that through participating in just two events during the year, that the potential earnings for a participant could be anywhere from like 50 to $200. So yeah, this is exciting. And it's, again, it's, it's the power of aggregation that allows us to do these things.
Thank you.
Anybody else aboard?
Just to clarify, are you going to keep us informed? You keep, you send everything to our village manager, Jerry Barberio, so that we know what to do next month?
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't know if anybody's planning to be at the meeting tomorrow morning, but, I mean, tomorrow afternoon. But we'll certainly update you on that. And again, we'll support in any way that you require a comeback or whatever is necessary so that we can stay on our timetable. And we appreciate very much that you're giving us the time tonight to, to help nudge this along.
I'll do my best. I'll try, I'll try if possible. And it's been a very successful program, so let's hope we do round three well. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks very much.
Just, just so folks at home know, when you, let's just say you, you're our default provider. So that when they, when they originally sign up with Con Ed, if they, if they take no other option, you're providing them with the electricity. But if for some reason, I just want people to know that if for some reason they want to burn more fossil fuels, they could just get rid of you and go to Con Ed. I, I'm just trying to let people know that this isn't, you know, that there is, there is still a choice. But, you know, this will be your default.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong. I think it's an excellent default and I think I'd rather pay a couple of more dollars a month to save the planet.
Yeah, that's, I'm glad you brought that up. That's, that's absolutely right, Mayor. And, you know, we're available, as I say, by phone, online at the, on the website. There's a form that you can either opt out or, as I said, make, make a supply change. We want to make sure that people are, you know, have the flexibility to be where they want to be. We, we're happy for everybody's support, but, but that is a, an important part of the, of the program is that ability for people to make their own choices.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Thank you, Ms. Santos. Is there any other, any other questions?
I, I would like to make an announcement as well. We are doing community info sessions and we really would welcome your residents. We have one called the Sound Shore where we put everyone from New Shell, the Mamaronecks, Larchmont and Pelham together. And so that should be on Wednesday. If I can provide anyone information on that, it'd be great if you could put it on your website or put it on your social media. That would help us like inform our residents.
Sally Roberts before, I know you've been in contact with Sally. But if, if you have something you want us to put on the website, just get in touch with Sally and she'll have it up tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you both very much. In touch.
Okay. Take care. Thank you. Bye now.
Okay. That concludes today's presentations. To the agenda, first out of my agenda is communication to the board. And Glenn.
Good evening. I hope everybody's having a wonderful summer or the best you can do under the circumstances. Welcome back, Jerry. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Number one, I'm glad that the police finally made a presentation. But to follow up on what I was saying, the national statistics are nice, but for the most part, they're not relevant. They don't change that much outside of occasionally your larcenies and your grand theft autos might see a spike. Burglaries might occasionally see a spike and that should be dealt with at a quarterly report. If there is a case where we have a rash of burglaries, that's why I said having somebody come in quarterly just to let the residents know is great. To remind all the residents to lock their cars, absolutely great. As you drive into the village on Palmer Avenue, and I've told you this two years ago, you go into a school zone and right in front of Walters is a beautiful sign that says village speed limit 40 miles an hour. A, the village speed limit, as far as I know, is now 25 miles an hour. And B, why can't that sign be moved to the end of the school zone? To indicate the end of the school zone. It is right in front of the high school, right across from Walters. Village speed limit 30 miles an hour. I mentioned it before, you go past the sign that says school zone speed limit 20 miles an hour. And then 50 yards later, you have a village speed limit sign 30 miles an hour. It should be moved to the end of the school zone. And if the village speed limit is 25 miles an hour, should indicate 25 miles an hour. Some questions about the tree law that I asked previously. If I go and get a permit to have a tree removed, do I have to have a licensed arborist remove the tree? Yes or no?
Or have it in front of me?
Okay. Tree law, complicated as it is, would, it simply wouldn't work. One suggestion, the top. Right now, wetlands are protected by the EPA and you also have buffer zones. If anybody wants to disturb, spray and do anything within a buffer zone or within a wetlands, or within a wetlands, that should be only done by a permit by our harbor coastal management. You don't need a whole set of laws under the tree law for that. You should have under environmental because it's not just trees. You don't want anything. You don't want grass disturbed. You don't want anything within a wetlands disturbed. So you would be better off having, if any disturbance, any spraying, organic insect, vegetable, defoliation, any kind of clearance disturbance cutting is to go on in any wetland or buffer zone. It can only be done by a permit and the permit should be done by harbor coastal management. And you could take a whole section of the tree law out because that would also cover the trees within both the buffer zone and in the wetlands, which is what you're looking to protect anyway. If you have three or more trees removed on your property within a five-year period and it's not part of something with the planning commission, it should be a permit by the Board of Appeals. That would cover clear coat, cutting of trees. If you're not before the planning board to remove three or more trees, you have to go get a permit from the Board of Appeals. That would cover your clear cutting on both ends. And if it's in the wetlands, you go to what I said before. That would take care of 95% of your problems. Very simple. And you can have a caveat to it that said, if somebody is going to remove three or more trees, that the tree committee should be notified. And they can give input either to the planning board, Board of Appeals, or to coastal management. Then all you have to deal with is single trees being removed on properties. Make it a much, much simpler law. So please think about that. I will mention it at the time. The other thing is the portion of the law that deals with killing a tree. I don't know how you prove it. I don't know how you enforce it. It's nice on paper. Realistically, we don't have the resources, the knowledge, or anything for it ever to be enforced. So, and I don't particularly see a lot of people going out and purposely killing trees. So I think that part of the law is overkill.
Thank you very much, Glenn.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing appointment authority for planning and zoning board members. I need a motion to open here.
Go move.
Second.
We see him.
Trustees Winchell.
Kelly?
Kelly's not at the desk.
Yeah, we really said.
Trustee Etches?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. So what we have here in front of us is a proposed law to remove the authority from the mayor to remove planning and zoning board members for courts. This would change the law to give that authority from the mayor, there's Kelly, to the whole Board of Trustees. I will save my comments. Does anybody on the board have any comments?
I mean, I can start. I think that four years ago, when the the law was changed to give the entire Board of Trustees the appointment authority for the planning and zoning, it wasn't harmonized with the removal power. And traditionally, the authority that appoints is usually the authority that removes. So I think that's the simplest way to go. I would also say that, you know, since we've had quite the week and we have very few people in attendance tonight and we haven't, people haven't been able to make public comments. I think we should discuss it tonight, but I think we should also adjourn it to the September meeting when people can weigh in on it.
I agree with you, Nora. I thank you for that comment. I was going to suggest we do the same thing just because tonight, you know, it's a little chaotic.
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't know what that will do to your timing of trying to get this on the ballot. I know.
You know what? I don't think we can get it on the ballot for this year because the new election, because the new election law required everything to go on August by yesterday, by last Monday.
All right, but I do think this received some attention and public comments. So yeah, okay, we're good. I'm done. I'm just not, I'm not feeling great tonight. So excuse me.
The veils aboard? Okay.
Do we, do we, do we need to make a motion to adjourn it to the next meeting? Because we don't want to renotice it, correct?
Can I comment?
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I thought you were.
Because this is something I want the board to consider. In 2003 or 2004, I forget which, the village of Maranick had police disciplinary hearings. There were four police officers who had disciplinary hearings and they were televised. And the whole Board of Trustees had, because the way the law was written, they had to sit there as Board of Police Commissioners during these hearings. So the officers who were being charged had a pretty savvy lawyer. And what he did was, you know, he just objected to everything. So after he objected to everything, the board would have to make decisions as a group about whether to overturn or sustain. And what happened was it turned into a circus. And what the board did, and I think they did it for the right reasons, is they then hired a hearing officer who was a retired judge to hear these hearings. And he heard them and gave his opinion, but they had never passed the law to delegate the authority. So they lost on an Article 78. And I was on board at the time when they lost because they had never passed the law to delegate. But my point is this, is that having five people be a hearing officer, I've seen it and it's unwieldy, especially if, you know, you talk about matters of law and matters of sustaining and overruling. And it gets really complicated and sometimes it could last into days and weeks. And that's why, you know, the last thing I did before I left the village of Maranick in 2009 is pass the law, maybe my last couple of meetings there, now by myself, obviously, with the rest of the board and their help and their support, to delegate the hearing of these laws to hearing officers. And the hearing officer would then, you know, come up with his recommendation and then go back to the Board of Trustees and make that, you know, determination. But the board didn't have to sit as a hearing officer board. Since there isn't a time constraint on this, I would hope the board would consider doing that when they change this law. The taking away, if you're going to take, I don't believe you need to change the law. I think, you know, one hearing in 125 years, you know, isn't that pressing an issue? But if you do, I would hope that you would delegate it to a hearing officer who then would have to give his findings to the Board of Trustees and then the Board of Trustees makes the decision. And that's what I would hope you would consider doing. Because, you know, if you go to L M C TV and ask them for the tapes of those meetings, you'll see what I was talking about. I mean, it was, it must have been 2003 when that happened. Yeah, because I got elected in 2004. But it was, it was hard. And there's a better way of doing this. And if we're going to do it, I'd rather do it right. And so I would hope you could consider that.
Tom?
Kelly?
In the case where you have a hearing officer, can, would the Board of Trustees be able to, you know, pass questions or ask questions? Would the hearing officer, you know, be, would the Board of, would the Board members be participating in any way with the hearing?
They could, but he would be the ultimate authority of, at that time, they didn't. They didn't. They left it to Judge, and I forget what his name was. But he was like out of central casting. He was like the guy from Paper Chase.
But then the hearing officer makes a recommendation, but then the board would vote and decide?
Yes.
Whether to accept.
Which is exactly how police hearings now work in the village of Maranick.
Yeah.
Thankfully, we haven't had to have any. But just something to consider, because I, if you're going to do it, I think you should do it in a way that benefits the community in the long run.
Well, I'm just imagining if the five Board of Trustees members had all been deciding the Goldstein matter and holding that hearing with five people trying to decide, it would have been like the police situation you're describing. Kind of a mess.
Yes.
I mean, I think the idea of a hearing officer is good, but I would like the Board of Trustees members to be able to participate in the hearing to the, I mean, I'm thinking of like the impeachment trial in the Senate where Judge Roberts was running it and making rulings. But, you know, questions were getting passed so that, you know, the senator could participate.
Yeah, but that goes to, that goes to how you actually set up the rules of the hearing, right?
Right, yeah.
You have to delegate the authority.
Yep.
I'm going to send around what we did in 2009, just for folks to consider.
Thank you.
And there are two residents with their hands up. Let's go to Robert. Glenn's a frequent flyer. Robert, I'm here. Okay. You're on, Robert.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
What happened to the presentation from the Board of Ethics? You skipped over the communication to the board.
Yeah, I explained that when I first got on.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear it. I didn't log on at the beginning.
Okay, the Board of Ethics could not get the paperwork together because they were all out of electricity in the past few days. So we deferred it to September.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Robert. All right, Glenn.
Yes, quickly. To back up the mayor, if you look at how hearings are held when you discipline a teacher in the New York school system and they need three different people at the same time, you need one person, you know, three different appointees at the same time, it could take 18 months to get rid of a teacher in New York City because everybody has to be available at the same time. If you do have a hearing officer understand something, you're also going to have whoever brings the complaint case, and that would be the trustee's vehicle to ask questions at an ethics hearing. In other words, when you have the hearing, you have the impartial judge, but you have two sides. You have, you know, the one side that has the accusation, you have the other side defending. And the trustees could, that's where the trustees would go to decide questioning the ethics. And they could ask any questions they want through whoever is representing whichever side. That's the way you'd, you wouldn't ask your questions through the judge. You'd ask your questions through either the person bringing the complaint or the person defending the complaint, depending on what side you are sitting on at that time. Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. Okay, so we need, you want to adjourn this to September?
Sorry, just one comment. I think it's very interesting what you just commented. Both Tom and Kelly, but I think, and of course Glenn, but the issue, this is about how to conduct a hearing. And of course, you know, that's when it's, if it happens again, hopefully not. But the point now here is who would make the decision? Then how you manage the proceeding is another separate issue. So I am willing to listen and I'm open to hearing it, but I think we're talking about two different things. But anyway, I'm okay adjourning it, of course, for the next, to be continued. That's my.
I just wanted to clarify, I beg to differ because it's not two different things. And let me just explain why. In 2000, you know, it's got to be a dual thing. It's got to be the ultimate decision. And this, this has to do, you know, right now, the law says that the mayor holds a hearing, right? So you need a law that says the village board may delegate a hearing to a hearing officer, but the village board will ultimately be the decision maker. I can send you what we did in 2009 in the interim. That might give it more clarity. But I think what I was trying to get at, maybe I wasn't clear about this, is that it has to be dual. It has to be taking the ultimate decision away from the mayor and giving it to the board, but also giving the board the opportunity to appoint a hearing officer. Because I believe, and I don't have it right in front of me, but I believe in 2009, what we said was that the village board may appoint a hearing officer. So, do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I hear it and we'll take a look at that. But I think in any case, in any case, because what's happening here, I think it was clear is that village law applies for default. But, so that's why this law would need to be passed. But that's, in any case, that's the first step in order to get to get.
Well, my point is I don't want to have to pass two laws. Because if you take the hearing, having a hearing away from the village board, you have to pass the law to do that too. And this was litigated. And I can show you the cases. It's Keon versus Village of Maranick.
But for the second, you wouldn't need a referendum.
For both of them, you need, no, you need a referendum for both. You need a referendum in one shot. You need to take it away from the mayor, right? And then you need to give it to the hearing officer. When we took it away from the police commissioners, right? The ability to hold a hearing and give it to the hearing officer, it took a referendum. Because you would, let me send you the stuff. And it might be more clear. We can talk about it in September.
I'd like to move that we adjourn this to the September meeting.
Second.
What's that date? Am I not top of the head?
The first meeting, the first meeting in September, whatever.
14th, Victor?
September 14.
September 14. Okay, because we have to have the date in the motion. Then make a motion to adjourn it to September 14.
Kelly, second. Yeah, right.
Trustees Winchell?
Yes.
Etches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the bills. What are the bills? First item is beach salaries resolution authorizing buddy transfers for beach salaries. In sum and substance, we opened the beach up much earlier than we had planned on because the village, this area went into phase four quicker than we thought it was going to be. We wanted to allow our residents, many of whom had to cancel vacation plans, an opportunity to recreate in Harbor Island Beach in July. Originally, we had planned on opening the beach in August. So that required us to hire the lifeguards and the young folks who you see who work down there in the booths. So that their salaries came to $8,583. But this was more than offset by the revenue that we got for opening the beach up early, which is $27,512. that we got for opening the beach up early, which is twenty-seven thousand five hundred and twelve dollars. So we are taking money from beach revenue lines, and we are bringing it to expensive, the expense lines of salaries. Eight thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars from the revenue lines, and they're delineated here, onto the beach seasonal salaries. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
It's a good problem.
Yes, but according to an abundance of, no. I'll, I'll remember tonight, I'll text you.
Okay, okay.
Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Some moved. Second.
Augustino.
Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
Nantes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The next item is we are transferring money in the marine education center lines from equipment to supplies. Apparently, this is to pay for fish food. I guess Kyle had a bumper crop of fish that she's keeping in the aquariums on a, which is now open Monday through Friday. I think it's from nine to five, no, eight to four. Is that right, John?
Yep.
Yeah, eight to four. You can take your kids down. I know everybody's looking for something to do with the kids this year. Kyle is offering Facebook classes twice a week, but you can go down there with your youngsters and look at the aquarium, and Kyle will answer any questions you have about the Long Island Sound and the environment around us. So this is transferring twelve hundred dollars from the equipment line to the supply line. Anybody have any questions?
No, just doing a great job.
Excellent job. All right, someone wanna make a motion, please?
Some moved. Second.
Augustino.
Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
Nantes? Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Next item on the agenda is the order to bills tonight. Bills, three hundred forty-six thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. Anybody aboard, any questions or concerns?
I have a couple.
Everybody good?
I know, and this probably Dan Sarnoff can help me here. I know you've been swamped, but maybe you have it in your head. This is, because this is Hillside Avenue, we're paying ten thousand six hundred to the engineers, and I didn't have time to follow, what, what are we paying? What, what's the status of the project? What, what are we paying here now?
Sure, this is for, if you recall, we held the eminent domain procedure law hearing last year on the bridge, but we've been negotiating with two, I'm sorry, we've been meeting with the three property owners or representatives around the bridge. This is the contract to purchase the easement and the piece of property we need for the bridge project from, I believe this is six forty Hillside Avenue. We just also agreed with six forty-one Hillside, which you should see on the next upcoming bill list, and then when I do my monthly report, that because of the the way that the church is set up in terms of their organization, we're gonna have to do what's known as a friendly condemnation of their property because there's no one who has the ability to sign off on a contract of sale. So this is, that's the update. This is for one, one of the properties. And the, the resolutions previously adopted by the board authorize the manager to sign off on the, the contract of sales or contracts of sale.
Are we, how, how much more? Longer do you expect this to go? How, are, are we halfway there? Are we less?
Well, we're, you know, in theory, two-thirds of the way there.
Okay.
Because we started with two of the homeowners. The the one for six forty-one Hillside is slightly more than this one. And the church is gonna be about half the price of this one, because we're taking, it's a much smaller piece of the church property that we're acquiring.
Okay, my other question is, I'm sorry.
I, I can report on this information in my monthly report, which will be done by the end of this week.
Okay, thank you. My other question is on page eleven, we have a cert, certiorari, thirty-three thousand. We haven't done one in a while. This is one that was held over because of COVID. What, what is, any idea, maybe?
I mean, this was previously approved by the board. I, I can't get into my computer in the office, so I can't look it up in
Okay.
the financial system, but I, I don't know if anyone else has the ability to get into it. If not, we can definitely provide the background tomorrow morning.
Okay, perfect. That's good.
Anybody else?
I actually had a Hillside question. What was the, what was our estimate for what the, what was our budget for the easements?
I will get the answer, but I, I seem to recall it was in the, what was authorized was in like the twenty-five to thirty-five range. But I will, I will follow up on that tomorrow morning.
I think we're in the budget. That's my.
I think we're, we're definitely in the budget. But I, again, I will, in the monthly bridge report, I will make sure to include that information.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Glenn is his hand up.
Yeah, I had a quick question about, I see we have more refunds for railroad parking. Where do we actually stand on railroad parking? Have more people come in to take those spots, or are we running at eighty percent? Ninety percent? Where are we exactly with our railroad parking at this point?
I'll leave you on that tomorrow, Glenn.
Okay, thank you, Augie.
Okay, anybody else on board? Good? All right. Any motion to adopt the abstract that you ordered about?
Some moved. Second.
August, please.
Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
Nantes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay. Okay, next is a resolution scheduling public hearing on PLH twenty-twenty waving recreation fees, an abundance of riches. That's what it was, Nora.
An abundance of riches, okay. An embarrassment of riches. It is. Embarrassment of riches. That's it.
Thank you. Between us, we got it.
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty waving recreation fees, all fail affordable units bill. This, you know, we, everyone talks about affordable housing and the problem with affordable housing getting built in this area is the high price of land. The very high price of land. And while we can't affect that, one of the things we can reduce is the cost to the builder when he builds a project that is an all affordable building. That means every apartment in that building or is, is classified as affordable under the county's guidelines. This gives a relief from the recreation fee. I think it's about eighty-five hundred dollars for every new unit that gets built in a building, goes into the recreation fund. This gives relief for that based upon how affordable the apartment is, the more affordable, the lower we reach into people with the more need, the bigger discount you get on the on, on the recreation fee. So this is the schedule of public hearing for it. And the public hearing would be scheduled for September fourteenth, twenty-twenty. Does anybody on the board have any questions, comments, or concerns about scheduling a public hearing?
I do, and I'm completely in support of this, but it was on our work session, and I have some questions about the law. And I was going to try and watch the meeting, and I just couldn't do it, so I think we should circulate the questions. I think maybe we can just email Bob with the questions, and I'm not sure it's what we wanted it to be, and so I think we have to discuss it in work session.
I agree.
Why don't we put it on the work session? Let's just put it on the work session for September twelfth.
But I think Kelly and I both have questions, it looks like, so we should, we should ask them of Bob ahead of time, so maybe it'll be, you know, maybe we can make a little progress.
Yep, I'll send an email.
Me too.
Put it on the, both the work session and the regular session for the fourteenth of September.
Fine, fine.
There are substantive changes to the law, and I don't know if there will be, but if there are, I, I don't know if it'll be able to go on for regular session.
No, but maybe, but maybe what we can do is if we have changes, we can discuss them with you, and then we can be ready and into.
Oh, I see. Okay, okay.
Well, the only thing we'd be doing on February and September fourteenth in the regular meeting would be scheduling public hearing.
Oh, so you wanna schedule, sorry, I think I'm a little bit confused. You wanna schedule the public hearing for the fourteenth, or you wanna schedule the public hearing on?
Is on September fourteenth. We're gonna have this on the work session, right? But I also wanna put it on the regular session to schedule a public.
Okay, that's totally fine. I thought you were talking about work session and then opening the public hearing on the same.
Right, yeah.
Okay, then, yeah, that's totally fine. So I will aim for a date then in October, maybe to hold the public hearing.
Thanks.
Yeah. Christie, are you the point person on this? Maybe I should just call you tomorrow?
It's actually Bob. I'm, I'm the draftee of the resolution.
Okay.
Or the resolution.
All right, I'll deal with him. Thanks.
All right, so Sally, have this on both the work session and the regular session. Thank you, Sally.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing street closure and sale and serving a beer for the twenty-twenty-one St. Patrick's Day parade. Okay. All right, this, this would be the parade. They're asking us to schedule it. Hold on. I lost the number here. They're asking us to schedule it on the twenty-first of March, and with a rain date of the twenty-eighth of March, twenty-twenty-one. You know, before anybody writes letters or calls, this is all depending upon, you know, will we all with COVID, right? And what the law will allow, and what the governor's emergency orders will allow. I'm sure the, the folks at the St. Patrick's Day Parade understand that. They, they had to cancel their parade this year right at the beginning of this whole mess. So maybe with the luck of the Irish, we would be able to have the parade next year on the twenty-first, and this would close the street that day and allow the sale of, or providing of beer in Harbor Island Park. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Hope springs eternal.
Yes. Yes, well, you know, it's not within the realm of impossibility, right?
Nope, but. But you gotta make a plan and try.
Yeah, with the help of God, we'll be out of the woods. All right, I will make this motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing work at the Westchester Drive Waterworks for a filtration plant, but we are holding this off because the board wants some more information. Hopefully, we will deal with this at our next meeting. Next week, we have a, we're going to have a special meeting. Not just for this, but we will swing that in. And on to swings. For C. There was a request from the community that resides in Washingtonville and that uses Columbus Park to recreate. We, we put new play equipment there maybe in the beginning of the century, and it's the only community park that doesn't have a swing set. And this was recently pointed out to us by some neighborhood residents, and they're absolutely right. And we have money in the recreation fee fund that I talked about before. We have a lot of money. So we wanna right this wrong by giving the folks who live in and around, not in, who live around Columbus Park the ability to have their children play on some swings, which I think, I don't, I never met a kid that doesn't like swings. So this resolution will provide for that. And it's in accordance with this request, both staff has contracted MRC Recreation, as they are the distributor of game time play equipment, an authorized vendor on New York State contract, and received a quote in the amount eighteen thousand seventy-nine dollars and four cents, which would provide for new swing sets at both playground locations in the park. And whereas installation of said equipment will be performed by a separate contract with Thomas Corsetti Incorporated, and they are authorized installer of game time play equipment at a cost of fifteen thousand three hundred, resulting in a total project cost of thirty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and four cents. And this is out of a trust fund of four hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred and one dollars. Somebody have any questions or concern?
No. I do. I have, I have a question, because last time when this was in our work session, I, the way this came up actually was, I believe, the Lions Club wanted to put some money towards this, and there was gonna be some follow-up about whether they were going to still contribute. I'm looking for my notes. I thought it was the Lions Club, but has, do we know? Are they gonna?
Go on.
So we, Jason Pinto, myself, we had a conference, a teleconference with a couple of people from the CRC and the Lions Club to talk about recreational opportunities. The Lions Club hasn't initiated a fundraiser yet, but they are looking to do something probably towards the fall to raise money for recreational purposes in the village. So as a first step, you know, Jason, the village manager, myself, I believe Barry are gonna talk about kind of a master plan for Columbus Park. We also talked about, talked with them about some other parks in the village that could use some TLC. So that they were, they were receptive to, you know, helping, raising money for the village for its recreational facilities.
Thanks very much.
Yep.
Hey. Well, the questions, I will gladly make this motion.
Second.
Augustino.
Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
Nantes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Could I ask one question? I, I'm just, I'm still a little confused about the, the hearing for the recreation fees. It's, we're having a work session on August twenty-fourth, so we'll discuss it then, and then it could then, did we say that, or did we say we were doing everything the fourteenth?
You said we did everything the fourteenth.
So it's on our work session, so it's automatically gonna be discussed on the twenty-fourth. Because we postponed all of our work session to the twenty-fourth, so that's good.
You're right.
Okay.
Big catch, door.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Communication to the board?
We need to vote. We need to vote?
All right.
We voted.
Come on, Glenn.
Glenn, tip at five oh six Hill Street. I'm glad to hear the swing sets going in. I would further follow up with the users of Columbus Park to see if there's any other recreational apparatus that they feel that is lacking in the park. See if that's doable. Finances of the village, we are starting to get numbers in. Obviously, we're in very dubious times. How are we doing with our parking revenue? How are we doing with what we're collecting in fines? How are we doing with our permit revenues? How are we doing with our permit revenues? Uh, there might be something where uh maybe in October or September, you just have a quarterly or a four-month update to see where you're gonna be. I know sales tax haven't been off that much, but the problem with that is you're talking apples and oranges. Uh, you did have a raise in the sales tax last year that I believe started in August. Starting in August, you're gonna see your sales tax, apples and apples, because you're gonna see what you collect in sales tax against what you collected last year in sales tax with the increase that went into effect. So I just think that it's something that uh you should be uh continually aware of, continuing following. The other one is um, at some point, this board is going to have to address the fifty-foot setback law they put in. Uh, it's already caused uh a major problem with one project in the village where literally you have a board saying, well, if we pass it, we have to break the law the way it's written. They had the building inspector, they had the lawyer for the village in there and they are turning themselves off, over sideways, trying to figure out how to interpret how to get something built that needs you, you have known since you passed it. It needed clarification, it was done in a rush, it was done poorly. The other uh thing that you have to look at is the multi-dwellings law, how that integrates with the village laws. Again, it is going to be causing problems with projects. It's nice that you waived the fee for recreation, but if you have laws that when taken together, nobody can build anything. What goo- good does it do to give a cash incentive when nothing is gonna get built in the village anyway? Currently, you don't have any new projects in front of any board in this village. Every single project, the newest one would be the small apartment building behind the regatta. The other two projects, one is over two years in process and the other one's over a year in process. You have nothing in front of any of your boards currently right now to build anything in the village of Marne. Thank you.
Thank you, Len. Okay. Report for the village manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, um, since Tuesday, we've been dealing with a second state of emergency. Um, now we don't only have to deal with one state of emergency at a time, now we have to deal with two states of emergency at a time. And um, as of Wednesday, August fifth at four PM, exactly one half of the village Con Ed customers were out of power. Forty-five hundred customers were out of power. As of about an hour ago, we still have five hundred and ninety-five. Um, I use the word still because it's still not fair for those people to still be without power. But uh Con Ed has um helped us um with thirty-nine hundred customers uh being restored. And a lot of that has to do with so many people that I couldn't even begin to thank on our side uh at the county and at the state level, at Homeland Security. Um, the county emergency operations center has been fantastic, but really it's a, it's a tribute to the persistence and the focus of our um employees, of our department heads. Um, we're absolutely relentless and uh the Board of Trustees jumped in and they did what they could do to get to the higher levels uh as well as continuously being in top contact with me and with Tony and with Chief Leahy to just try to get everything um of critical uh concern uh to the attention of Con Ed. Uh, and it took a couple of days for communications to open up on their side, uh, but we finally were able to make inroads and figure out who to talk to and how to talk to them and how to contact them. Uh, and when we did, things changed drastically. Um, at one point, I received a text from Tony. It might have been Friday night or Saturday morning where we had thirty-five out-of-state um restoration trucks in the village. That's um, that doesn't happen unless they're afraid of our elected officials and our appointed officials um with uh how persistent we were. So I know because some of you have been on the call, but I've been on every call uh with the county and with Con Ed, that there are some communities that still have twenty, thirty, forty percent of their community still out. I'm not sure why, it doesn't make any sense. Today, in fact, a community closer towards the city um had not seen a restoration truck yet. Um, and that's just unconscionable. I, I don't, I can't understand that. I've never seen anything like it. I've been through Irene, I've been through Sandy, um, I've been through some disasters. And the response is just, just abysmal and it's, it's even hard for me to come up with words. But when our employees and when our staff and when the people who work for the village of Marne need to step up, boy, it's unbelievable. It's something that I've never seen before, I've never experienced before. And I've worked for two counties and I've worked for two municipalities. Um, and this is by far the best staff that I've ever worked with. That's for me. I have um one contract for a summer camp um where we negotiated um social distancing and training one-on-one uh with the recreation department to file with the uh, to file for the um um record. That's it.
Mayor, may I, may I add a comment, very brief? Hello?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Yes, well, Jerry, you, you, you've been, you've been a tremendous champion. I mean, let, I don't, I don't want to extend here because we all start jumping and I know you, you're busy, you want to get out of these, but you've been amazing. Uh, on those county calls, hearing Tony speak and you with such a clarity, to the point, you've been amazing. But, and I understand your focus on staff and employees. Uh, the uh, the fire department offering their command post.
Fire department was amazing.
And they always want to hear that we acknowledge what they do. And if you get a chance to speak to them tomorrow, when you speak to the, to the, to the chief, tell them that the entire Board of Trustees, you know, really appreciate, we were we, we were really amazed that the speed everything worked out, having that command post ready to, to, I think that, please convey that.
I will, absolutely. That's great, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I think he's a hundred percent right. Every employee in this village stepped up. Uh, yourself, Jerry, I know the hours you put in, I know the time you put in, I know how much you care and that you were there. I just want to give a special mention to the head of DPW, Tony Archivelli. Uh, he's like a dog with a bone.
Yep.
You know, once he gets his teeth into something.
Yep.
I didn't have a chance.
Yep.
Uh, I, I just, when I, 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 I've been doing this a while and Con Ed is a constant source of disappointment to me. Uh, and it seems like they just get worse. And uh, I think you were right, we have to stay on them and constantly keep hectoring them and badgering them and that's really what works and we'll keep doing that. But uh, something's gotta change in New York State, this can't go on like this. You know, it, it just, it just can't go on like this. And I, I hope that our representatives in Albany, who I know are great uh public servants, will spearhead this because this shouldn't happen. We, we pay the highest electoral rates in the country and we get a bis- abysmal service. But thank you to you and all the employees. Is that all you have to do, Jeff?
That's it, Mayor.
Ogie?
Looking at this time, Mayor.
Christie?
Nothing from us.
Nothing from the village attorney's office?
No.
Uh, minutes of boards of trustees' work session and regular session of June twenty-second, July thirteenth and AP minor items meetings of July twenty-seven, twenty-twenty and a meeting of a tree committee, of the tree committee of uh July ninth, twenty-twenty. I want to thank all our boards and committees who are starting to meet uh on Zoom. I know it's, it's not optimal, but uh I, I, I really admire how our volunteers keep wanting to do their job. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, have a good night, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
Thanks.